October 23rd, 2024, four o'clock work session for the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. Just a few notes about work sessions before we get started. We, this is for information purposes only. This is our chance to learn something and ask questions of staff and some other guests. We don't take public comment during our work sessions, but we do also not make any, take any votes or make decisions during this time. We do, however, accept public comment at our 5:30 business meeting. So if anyone hears something here that interests them, feel free to reach out to us either by email or they can come to that 5:30 business meeting and give some general public comment there, too. We are going to hear about our behavioral health crisis system oversight and accountability. And I think I can turn it directly to Bob and have you introduce your guests and get us started.
Thank you, Commissioners. I promised I would not talk to myself today as I was trying to pull up the share screen. So thank you for giving me three seconds. My name is Bob Triantzki. I'm the Director of Behavioral Health Projects for Douglas County. And we are excited and pleased and grateful for the opportunity this afternoon to talk to you and to give you some opportunity for some feedback, for some insight, for some questions about adding accountability and oversight to the behavioral health system of care in Douglas County. I'm going to take a minute. We have, believe it or not, when people work in our crisis system of care, sometimes they bump into crises on their way to county commission study sessions. So we have a couple of other people who will be joining us. But I'm going to start to my left with Chief Patrick and Sonia. They can introduce themselves.
Hi, Mike Patrick. I'm the Chief of Police of Baldwin City and I'm the co-chair of the CIT Council.
Hi, I'm Sonia Bayaza. I'm Deputy Director for Douglas County Emergency Communications and I'm a CIT Council member.
So also joining us hopefully momentarily will be Chief Lockhart from Lawrence Police Department and also Ryan Storch, who's the Senior Director of Crisis Services for Burt Nash. We have been meeting. What I want to do today is I want to give you an overview of some progress that's been made and where we're going. And as we talk about the transition from the progress that's been made to where we're going, how we might put some more structure in place to provide oversight, accountability, and continuous quality improvement on this ever-evolving and growing in complexity crisis response system. So last Thursday evening over at 200 Main Street, Lawrence Douglas County Public Health launched the next iteration of the Community Health Improvement Plan, the CHIP. And one of the planks of that CHIP, one of the focused areas of the CHIP, continues to be behavioral health this year. The overall goal in the behavioral health space, we're continuing, a lot of the work that's happening in the behavioral health plank of the CHIP continues what we started in 2018. But the goal is to build an integrated system of behavioral health care that serves the whole person, their whole life, so they realize their full potential. In the last iteration of the plan, much of the work and many of the goals in the plan were focused on improving our behavioral health crisis system specifically. In this iteration of the plan, we have four overall objectives that are closely linked to the growth of the behavioral health crisis system but are designed to get us to a point where we don't have to continue to grow the behavioral health crisis system. So we have four overall objectives. And I keep saying we're going to aim for zero and we're going to strive for five. So the first is to promote integration of supportive housing and behavioral health services to achieve functional zero for chronically homeless individuals by 2029. One chronically homeless individual in a community of our size is one chronically homeless individual too many. We also want to decrease, continue to decrease the age-adjusted suicide rate in Douglas County. In the last iteration of the CHIP, we set a goal to reduce the suicide mortality rate per 100,000 people from 16 to 14. We've made some really considerable progress on that. Currently in 2023, the suicide mortality rate was at 14.3. So we came really close to accomplishing that goal. So we were striving to reduce that from 14.3% to 12.8 per 100,000 by 2029. The third goal or the third objective is to reduce the drug overdose mortality rate in Douglas County, continue to make progress on seriously addressing substance use in our community. And the fourth objective is to reduce chronic absenteeism rates in Douglas County schools by 10%. So those are kind of the overall objectives. And then, you know, how do we get there? Well, you see some things that you've seen before, prioritizing prevention, integrating lived experience across the system of care, striving for zero suicide, improving access to care. What I want to talk about today is how do we optimize the behavioral health crisis response system that we've spent so much time and significant investment to bring online? And again, just for context, this is what our community looked like in 2018 in the absence of 24/7 crisis services. Too few options. People in crisis, because there were too few options, often wound up in jail unnecessarily, often wound up in the emergency department unnecessarily. And there's kind of a revolving door type of, there's a, where there is a revolving door which chronically hampers individuals from making progress and being able to thrive in a community. This community turned to a coalition of stakeholders and community partners, primarily service providers in the healthcare space to try to make progress on addressing that lack of crisis services. And we sort of addressed this system by putting in place what's known as kind of the ideal crisis response system. So between a person in crisis and jail and an ambulance and a 911 call, some more options, 24/7 crisis line, a crisis line that is linked to be able to deploy a mobile response team or a 911 emergency call center that's able to deploy a mobile response team, a mobile response team that can take people to a 24/7 crisis center, and a whole series of post-crisis supports. What's interesting is we've made some real progress on these goals of reducing bookings into the jail and reducing the number of people who go to the emergency department in a behavioral health crisis. Between 2018 and 2023, if you look at the number of visits to the emergency department with people who are in a behavioral health crisis, that number has reduced by 27% between 2018 and 2023. That was before the Treatment and Recovery Center even opened. In addition, if you look at overall jail bookings in the community, in 2018, there were slightly more than 5,000 jail bookings into the Douglas County jail. In 2023, it's just over 3,000. So more than a 30% reduction into the number of people that are being booked into jail. And we've put a lot of interventions in place. It's impossible to precisely determine which is causing, but sort of if you look at sort of a correlation, we've done and implemented a number of interventions. And, you know, the trends seem to indicate that we might be on the right track. The centerpiece of that work really was the development of the Treatment and Recovery Campus. So a campus that fully integrated crisis services and a 24/7 crisis center, transitional housing, and 10 units of permanent supportive housing. This is kind of a proof of concept of what a full continuum of care would look like. And like I said, it was the centerpiece of much of the work that was done under the CHIP with the assistance of the sales tax that was passed during Proposition 1. But that was not the only thing that we've brought online. There have been a number of interventions with a ton of partners, significant investments across the system of care. And we've brought online a system that while it's very comprehensive, it's also complex. And so what we need to start to do is to ask ourselves, how do we get all of these components to really smoothly and efficiently operate, interact, and talk to each other? And how do we take some of the recent initiatives that have been happening in the crisis system? So things like the Familiar Faces Initiative, the integration of peers across the system of care, that intensive care coordination service, mobile integrated health, a community or assertive community treatment. There are a number of components in this system. And if we're not careful, we can continue to do what we have been doing for the last five years in some ways, which is building the plane while we've been flying it. Now, this is, this, there's been some benefit to this type of approach. It's allowed us to make a lot of progress in a short period of time. But this is not a sustainable strategy. And so we need some structure and we need some accountability and we need our partners to start to agree how we are going to work together in this season of this work. So I've shown this slide before. Here are some of the complexity and process challenges that you bump into when you're trying to implement this robust crisis system in a community of our size. It raises some questions. How do we build and sustain a 24/7, 365 crisis system in a community of our size in a state without Medicaid expansion? How do we ensure that individuals in crisis get the right care in the right setting at the right time? And the right time means how do we ensure that happens every time? How do we maximize outside funding sources? We've talked about leveraging, funding, braiding funding, holding our partners accountable for leveraging as much as possible from their resources and their state funding, state and federal funding sources. So how do we maximize that? How do we foster transparency and accountability? So we see what everybody's bringing to the table. And how do we build in continuous quality improvement while minimizing competition between agencies? We've made a lot of progress of being a community that's not as anchored in turf battles. But how do we sustain that? So we can really leverage the expertise and the commitments and the resources that everybody has to bring to bear? How do we hold coalitions and partnerships together? And the last piece, and what we really want to focus on today, is how should county government effectively leverage its position as convener, strategist, and funder to pull together behavioral health justice system and community stakeholders to formalize crisis system oversight? So this is a challenge to blend municipal leadership and healthcare and human service providers and emergency medical services. All of these stakeholders have roles to play in a very complicated system. In the CHIP, we've continued to identify optimizing the behavioral health crisis system as one of the priorities under the behavioral health plank. I wanted to share with you the goals that the GPL work group, the CIT Council, and our partners in various components of the crisis system have identified moving forward between 2024 and 2028. We were repeating or continuing continuations of what we've set out to do from the beginning, which is to build an integrated system of care that moves from crisis and reactive intervention as a norm to recovery and prevention as a practice, ensuring that individuals get the right care in the right setting at the right time. And here's the new challenge for us, increasing utilization of these services, increasing the frequency of response from things like mobile teams, and improving communication and connection engagement in those pre- and post-crisis service and care pathways, making sure that people don't wind up back up in the crisis cycle or to prevent them to ever getting in crisis in the first place. So specifically, sorry, I need to go backwards. Specifically, the group set, has set these five objectives. Continuing to reduce the number of people who present at the emergency department. We believe it's possible to continue to do that by 25%. Increasing, this is new, increasing the number of 911 calls referred to an alternative mobile crisis response team by 10% annually. Continuing to reduce the percentage of booked individuals at the Douglas County jail with serious and persistent mental illness. We're changing the metric that we're going to measure as we move forward between 2018 and 2024 to really focus on the population in the jail that is impacted by chronic mental illness, treatment-resistant depression, a diagnosis such as bipolar disorder, schizophrenia. We want to really see if there's, how, how these services on the outside of the system are preventing people from getting into the system. The TRC team has embraced the idea of increasing the percentage of TRC patients who complete an outpatient visit follow-up after discharge. Currently, it's at 65%. We want to see a 10% improvement over the next four years. And then this is also new, increasing the number of Familiar Faces referrals who consent to share information and engage in care coordination and treatment by 10% annually. The group identified, I think it's seven strategies altogether. The first two are the ones specifically they're going to talk about this afternoon. By 2025, establish a Douglas County Crisis System Coalition to provide system oversight, inform quality improvement, and increase community engagement and utilization of the, of the response system. Also, before the end of this year, to reconfigure the structure and membership of the Douglas County CIT Council, which is why I'm glad that Chief Patrick and Ryan Storch, as the co-chairs and facilitators of that group, they've been guiding a process of restructuring so that that group expands its scope beyond merely guiding CIT training and to provide a forum for the stakeholders like you see here at the table and in the room with us together so that we can continue to communicate and share and review data. The, the, the system actors, a forum for the system actors to be able to collaborate and make decisions and come to consensus-driven recommendations to present to you. By 2025, integrating all crisis system entities on the My Resource Connection data sharing platform. We've made tremendous progress this year and we are this close to having all of our partners agreeing and actually being on the My Resource Connection platform. Big kudos to Dr. Cravens and Jill Jolikor for helping to lead that work. And then our partners at each of the agencies that receive county funding to really commit to building that data culture that Commissioner Kelly talks about all the time, where we are genuinely committed to being open and transparent and using data to help follow people in ways that we get them the care that they need. Integrating 988 and the deployment of alternative 911 emergency response teams by aligning the Douglas County Crisis Line and mobile response deployment with the Emergency Communications Center. Again, there's been a lot of work happening in this community in this year between headquarters, Burt Nash, and the ECC through the GPL process, the Government Performance Lab process that was facilitated by Harvard University, thanks to Chief Lockhart's leadership to bring that technical assistance and expertise in. How do we, moving forward, have true integration on that first point of contact when somebody's in trouble and they pick up the phone? Identifying sustainable strategies to expand the availability of alternative emergency response teams such as police corresponders, mobile integrated health, and homeless response to seven days a week. We have a lot of new interventions, but many of them are available three days a week, four days a week. Crisis happens seven days a week. And that presents challenges to stakeholders, to funders, to publicly elected officials to figure out what is the best utilization of resources such as the sales tax? What do we really need and how many days a week and when for these services to be online? And the last one is to operationalize and formalize a process to enhance care coordination and resource availability for Familiar Faces. Chief Lockhart took the initiative about a year ago to say, hey, there's some great resources now in this crisis system. And there's still a separation between access to those resources and what our teams of first responders are dealing with all the time. So it's not always clear that the people that law enforcement see as Familiar Faces and the people that the emergency department or the mobile team or the system actors are seeing. It's not clear that we really understand the full picture of what's happening to an individual in ways that can be helpful. So we have been experimenting, thanks to a lot of the initiative of Commissioner Reed and I and, and others over the last couple of years, Jill, Sandra Dixon from, from LMH, to, to get involved in a national effort to formalize a process in communities to meet the needs of Familiar Faces through data sharing and collaboration. So those are the strategies in the Community Health Plan. And what we want to talk about today is how do we achieve those first two by the end of the year? So establishing a crisis response coalition and reconfiguring the structure and membership of the Douglas County CIT Council. A lot of the impetus for this comes from our participation in the Ideal Crisis System Roadmap Learning Community over the last three years. There were a number of us that started out working with Dr. Ken Minkoff and the National Council for Behavioral Health and the American Psychiatric Association, meeting with 10 communities from around the country to look at how to structure and formalize systems where you achieve ideal crisis outcomes. We've made a lot of progress in this, bringing these two pieces of the pyramid online, a service continuum in clinical practices with community support that serves a person in crisis. The foundation of that pyramid is accountability and finance and system oversight and governance. If you're not careful, all of our technical assistance partners, from our friends at Connections Health Solutions in Arizona, to the folks at the Crisis Roadmap, to people in other communities. If we're not careful, you build a Jenga tower. And that is definitely what we don't want to do. We want to make sure that our system is solid and sustainable and adequately sourced and resourced. So that requires a system approach. It requires some conversations about governance and financing and structure. It requires some serious efforts to build a culture of communication and collaboration and problem solving and putting data at the center of everything we do in terms of decisions. So what this group is proposing is that we do a new iteration for a leadership coalition that is focused not on the entire behavioral health system, but is really zeros in and focuses on the behavioral health crisis response system. So it's basically taking the service providers and adding to that at the center of this system some parties that were not formally continually engaged in the work that was done to bring the system online. So that's law enforcement, it's ECC, it's first responders, and it's our partners in the justice system as well because clients in crisis find themselves stuck and in between multiple systems. So what I shared in your packets and in the attachments to the agenda was an outline, a draft charter for a group such as this. And this is a draft, it's a working document. And so I wanted to run through that today and see if you have questions as we go. So the idea is to form a coalition. Its mission would be to ensure a comprehensive and cohesive system of behavioral health crisis care for all residents. Coalition would endeavor to achieve a high-functioning integrated system of care by working collaboratively to meet the needs of vulnerable populations across the lifespan. And the partners would be committed to reduce the use of emergency services and unnecessary justice system interventions by delivering the right care in the right place at the right time. The vision for that group would be to achieve that integrated system of care that moves from crisis to recovery and prevention. It would be a coalition that was anchored in core values such as being rooted in equity, being committed to eliminating disparities, being centered and informed by lived experience, being collaborative and coordinated across the system and with community partners, being empowered by technology that's accessible by all, sustainably and equitably financed and operated in a manner that demonstrates cultural competence and humility. The scope of a coalition would be advisory in nature. It would provide consensus-based recommendations to Douglas County and the City of Lawrence and other funders. It would establish guiding principles to ensure financial transparency, equity, and sustainability, guide a process of continuous quality improvement, work collaboratively to promote integration, and providing a forum for elevating systemic challenges and implementing evidence-informed solutions. You know, if you think about it, the work that came out of the GPL process really was our first rodeo at trying to work together as partners to solve a clear issue, which was the underutilization of mobile response and the lack of optimal coordination for the deployment of, of mobile response. We spent nine months really taking that question apart, gathering data that we didn't necessarily have at our fingertips, and then using that to make a decision which was controversial. It made some people uncomfortable, there was some loss involved, but moving the deployment of the mobile team from 988 and the crisis line to 911. Not so that we would send law enforcement and ambulances more frequently, but so that we would send law enforcement and, and ambulances less frequently. The only way we can get there is if the ECC has the ability and sort of equal access to deploy that team. So it's a good example of the type of work that probably will continue to be ahead of us as system partners and the reason why a coalition such as this could build on what we learned through the last nine to 12 months. The hope or the desired outcome would be that as a result of the coalition's leadership and collaboration, the people in the center of this work will always experience a warm, welcoming, trauma-informed response, timely access to high-quality, well-coordinated care, a seamless system without barriers, person- and family-centered services, and care that's responsive to age, developmental challenges, culture, gender, sexual orientation, physical disabilities, geographic location, language, linguistic, and other needs. That may seem like a silly list of everything. But one thing we're learning through this Familiar Faces process is if you see one individual who has crossed a threshold of risk because the things that they've encountered in their life are complex, difficult, challenging, unpredictable, you've seen one person. And depending on who you're trying to serve, there can be a combination of all of those things in that last line that are coming to bear to just making it impossible for a person to move forward, to sort of create really significant and what seemingly unending suffering and to continue to impact the system in ways where they're touching points of the system that are the wrong place and they're getting the wrong care in the wrong time. So we have a proposed structure, which would be an executive committee that would have some high-level designees or appointments from, one from the County Administrator's Office, one from the City Manager, the Douglas County Sheriff or a designee, Douglas County Fire Chief or EMS Division Chief, the Emergency Communications Director, the Executive Director of LDC Public Health, the Specialty Court Judge. My role and Katie Fitzgerald's role as the coordinators of behavioral health projects and the justice, criminal justice projects, lived experience in impacted individuals. That would form an executive committee that would then, and that group would start meeting this year kind of bi-monthly to really iron out and solidify the structure for this group, clarifying what the agenda will be for this coalition, getting some training, orientation, and development from some of the outside expertise that we have at our, at our disposal from the Crisis Roadmap team. So forming an executive committee that would really be the leadership body for the coalition. And that committee would be supported by additional members. Everyone would meet together quarterly. So that additional membership group would include a Douglas County Police Chief, could possibly be the CIT Chair. If you look at the CIT Council restructure, we're, we're recommending that the Chair of CIT Council always be a Douglas County Police Chief. Chief Patrick has agreed to and is currently serving in that role. For example, the TRC Director and Medical Director, a Burt Nash designee, a DECA designee, a Heartland Radec designee. All of our behavioral health partners would have a designee. And then up to five community representatives. And we can talk a little bit more about how those representatives would be selected or get some insight or input from you on how that would work. So that would be the structure. You'd have a crisis response coalition, an executive committee of system leaders to provide oversight, integration, and accountability, supported by the CIT Council, whose focus would be communication, problem solving, and quality improvement. And then under the CIT Council, kind of four work groups. One, an alternative 911 emergency response work group to continue the work that was started by the GPL process, continuing to implement CIT training annually. We've added the Familiar Faces Initiative and the Stepping Up Initiative. This is the place where all of those pieces of work that had been done in various places as the system has evolved, pulling it all together under this umbrella and being supported by a community advisory group. Now, we're having conversation and nothing's been decided and we're trying to get input from all of the players in this. But there's a possibility that the TRC Advisory Group, which was stood up specifically to focus on TRC, as this coalition comes online, it could be that that group could be the group from which we draw community representation in these various work groups and that it might, could, it might, could evolve into a system advisory group versus being exclusively focused on the TRC. We're just starting those conversations, but as we've talked about this, we thought there might be some, some ability to sort of consolidate and to take advantage of. I wish you all could have an opportunity to be in the room for that TRC Advisory Group. It is a wonderful table of expertise, concerned, passionate, thoughtful, highly skilled individuals that have really been providing great insight and feedback to Dr. Houston and DeBree and the Burt Nash Team for Treatment and Recovery Center. So that's what the system would look like moving forward. The work groups would be the Familiar Faces CIT Council. The work groups would be the Familiar Faces, CIT, Alternative 911 and Stepping Up Initiative. And, you know, depending on the feedback we hear today, feedback we hear from the city, feedback we continue to hear from stakeholders, kind of a proposed timeline would be to bring that executive committee online in the next two months to formalize and adopt the CIT Council Charter, which is also attached to your agenda. And then beginning in 2025 to orient coalition members, review baseline data after we have, you know, a year and a half to two years of solid data on the components of the system, meeting, having the CIT Council meet as a restructured group and operationalizing the CHIP goals, objectives and strategies that you've seen. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and open up for conversation with our partners or questions from you.
Commissioners, do you have questions you want to start with?
I'll get us started maybe. So I noticed in the, some of the first things in, in the handout talked about accountability. And I'm interested in how you see accountability. Both groups are listed as advisory in nature, but then accountability is the goal. Can you make some connections for me on that?
I can try and I can ask our partners to join with us. You know, I think up to this point, we've done a really good job of receiving proposals from our partners of things that they would like to try and experiment with or a need that needs to be addressed. And through the county's budget process, bringing some recommendations to you. I think as we brought the Crisis Center online, there was a lot of support from, by vetting a lot of those decisions through the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition before we brought things to elected bodies to say, here's what this will cost, here's how this should be, here's how we could invest in this. And so I think we want to ensure that the county is getting the benefit of our partners' insight and expertise so that before something comes to you through the budget process or as a formal request throughout the course of the year for a policy change or what have you, that we have multiple tables where those things can be vetted. And, you know, and we could get to a point where before something comes to an elected body, there's been consensus built that this is truly the right direction to head in. Before we ask city or county government to fund something, we should make sure as partners that we've leveraged any type of outside braided funding that we could bring to bear or to leverage grants or that. So it, it just creates a structure for the partners to be accountable, to vet things that are in the best interest of the system versus the best business of their agency or the best interest of the department that is a part of the system.
Just follow up on that, Commissioner. So that, that sound, maybe you're thinking about accountability differently than I'm thinking about accountability, which is fine. But like, for example, my RC, you know, we've had partners who have not used my RC. Is this a place to sort of say, how do we get everyone on board using the same data collection tool? Or what barriers are there? I mean, I'm just trying to understand, like, how do we, if we set those goals and some of the partners are reluctant to do maybe the things the group agreed on, the strategies to achieve those goals, what's the system that partners are holding each other accountable?
I think that's a great question and a great example. And what I would say is, I think we discovered that the Familiar Faces Initiative was actually a forum where we could work through those, those things. So that the partners that were resistant to adding their data to, to my RC, they had legitimate concerns, you know, about privacy protections and regulations under 42 CFR. The Familiar Faces venue and that those meetings became a forum where, you know, Jill and, and the county team could hear from the partners and then come back to say, well, here is, you know, here is a draft shared release form. Here's the language we're proposing to put in next year's service agreements. And so, you know, I feel like those tables become the place where because everybody's at the table, there's no place to hide. And then, and there's also, go ahead, Chief.
And I'll just add, like accountability, we sometimes think of as a gotcha. What we found with Familiar Faces was we were holding each other accountable in a way that we were getting results. So for us, when we started looking at Familiar Faces, we were finding that a small number of people accounted for a large number of calls. Only so much I can do with that. I can arrest you, that's it. So, but if we start coming together and seeing how all of our lists overlap, then it's that helpful nature of people. We start saying, well, I don't want to arrest them anymore. The ER doesn't want to see them there anymore because there's nothing they can do, but somebody else says, I've got this idea, let's try this. Or somebody else says, I can't share this information with you, but we've come up with a solution to that. So it's not accountability in the traditional sense. We're holding ourselves accountable for an outcome for a person specifically, and that's where we've seen some of those good results is with people and, and just, you know, eating that big meal one bite at a time rather than looking at and thinking, I can't do it. And none of us can do it on our own. I think that's the part of the coalition we're looking at is how do we all lend our creativity to this? And maybe I'm not a healthcare professional, but maybe I've got an idea because I'm not a healthcare professional that is a pretty good idea. And, and they adopt that and it helps us resolve a situation. And, you know, the TRC has been a great resource for us and, and a lot of this problem solving has been driven by some of their ideas as well. And we've, we've seen some really good results out of this. I think maybe it's not the traditional way of thinking about accountability, but a little bit holding ourselves accountable. I hope that answered it a little bit better.
So the Familiar Faces meetings, those are private because you're talking about a specific individual across a variety of jurisdictions that have helped or anticipate helping that individual. The CIT Council, are those meetings public or those open to the public?
We do. The CIT Council has met, we don't talk specific names in that kind of, in that, that forum. We're building relationships with all of the groups that are there and going back a little bit to the accountability part. Everybody in that, in these groups want this system to work. And so the consensus is, is that it will be a consensus type of decision-making process that we may not all agree that that is the best way, but once we get done and decide something, it was a, we come to a consensus about it. That if, if some entity has a specific issue with one part of it, we don't stop until we work that issue out and that we all have that consensus. So I just wanted to start, go back to that. The CIT Council, it, we do do the Zoom option to that. When I say it's open to the public, I may have misspoke with that. We invite the key players to that meeting. It is not a broadcast to the public meeting. It doesn't mean that we don't have input from lived experience folks, because that's specifically part of that group, is that we do invite that, but it's not an open public forum, so to speak.
And is that because it is advisory only, they're not taking votes, you're not making decisions there? I'm just trying to figure out what, what that transparency looks like.
It's actually a very good question. My participation in this group has been with, for quite a while with this group, it has never involved opening it up to the public to come in. We talked about specific processes and things like that, but we've just never really involved that, other than the lived experience folks that we do. And that was specifically for training. This, the way we're doing it now has been broadened from that. We were, we, this CIT Council was originally put forward to guide what the training was and presented to law enforcement for the intervention part. And with that, we had to have the, the community's input on what it was we were learning and whether or not it was going to work. And having those people with the lived experience was invaluable. We couldn't do it without that. But as far as a open public meeting, it has been an invite that we, we have selected folks to come to that.
The coalition would, this coalition, I would assume would be an, an open meeting. Just like the TRC Advisory Group is a, is an open meeting.
So I guess I'm looking at, not very long ago, we revised bylaws for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and I'm seeing some kind of parallels in terms of like bringing a lot of voices together for the idea of looking at systems and systems change. Those, however, we have a, you know, a commissioner that sits on that board and it's also open to the public. And I'm not sure if it takes public comment exactly, but it's, it's available and anybody can watch it and know what's being talked about. It's also, as we redid the bylaws for CJCC, really kind of streamlined and made a smaller group of people who were more actively in that leadership and talking to each other. And I'm just curious if, if these processes have been parallel at all or kind of having conversations between what, what this group is, is becoming and what the CJCC is evolving to.
I don't think we really looked at them from that perspective. I mean, I think our thought with CJCC is meeting consistent with the national best practices related to JMI. This really feels a lot more locally based in terms of, I mean, we've got a lot of different parts at play that other communities might not. So I, I don't know that we internally looked at them through that same lens of one getting streamlined and this one. It feels like they were very different needs, at least.
Yeah, and I think another value was, I, I don't think, the CIT Council has not operated with codified bylaws, like ever. So this is a, this is a new thing to formalize a, a charter and a structure. But one of the things that all the partners said was, if there are members of the public who want to participate in this forum and want to be included in this type of, because they have an interest in what's happening, we need to always be open to that. So it's not an attempt to close any of the doors other than with Familiar Faces. I mean, we are, you know, governed by HIPAA and 42 CFR's concerns and regulations and everybody's privacy requirements. So it's just not appropriate for, for an open forum. But I think there could be parallels here in terms of how a crisis response coalition meeting is made available to the public. So I think that's a good thing to take back internally and talk about public comment and structure, those sorts of things.
Yeah, I would really welcome kind of that conversation and your, your input back to that and maybe just, you know, putting Katie in that conversation and seeing if there are parallels from what they've been streamlining for CJCC. And I know we'll have some people who participate in both.
There are a number of people, for example, in the CJCC work groups who are members of the public, they're not members of the council, but they come to those meetings, they participate. In some ways, they've, they've been more integral in some ways than some members of the, some seated members of the CJCC, and that's healthy for everybody.
I don't know if there's an interest in having a commissioner sit on that council and just be ears in the room for that, like we do for CJCC. But it's also, maybe that then puts it to a higher level of, of needing to be in an open meeting. I'm just curious about.
Yeah, I guess I think that was part of my concern was that, you know, if a commissioner's attending, then we, you know, I still really hope this is, I mean, I take coordinating very seriously here. We, we need to make sure we're all working together really, really well. So I want the stakeholders and to be able to have that conversation. So not that they can't have it with commissioners there, it just, in some ways, it feels at a lower level than like leadership. So the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition had a commissioner on it. That group was disbanded. I think this is more of a group of like system actors that are working through it. But I think we can think and talk about that. And then I'd say also with Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, you've got elected leadership on that one with, you know, the DA and the, and the sheriff. So I think that also is a little bit of a difference.
And if I could just share maybe some, having been on the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition, especially, I don't know how you're thinking about those five members of the public. And, and in some ways, that may be representative of an elected body, but sometimes having a little less authority in the room helps progress. And I think there can be, you know, just by a commissioner who has funding decisions available to them can sometimes stifle conversation, can stifle collaboration. And I would want to be mindful of that, that sometimes while it feels like having commissioners involved in, in a lot of things is good, I also think we can pick representatives to, to represent either population groups or other things that, that we might not. And it, it's just another way of looking at that.
Yeah, certainly I looked down the list of, of entities that would have a seat on that and, and it's, it's, and it's fabulous to have all those voices and that's the need, right? But that's also, once you have all those voices, it becomes a little unwieldy. So I'm just kind of curious to see what those best practices might be or what those recommendations would be for wanting to have all voices at the table to look at systems, but also needing to run an efficient meeting that gets to something, especially consensus, which consensus is a, is a really high goal and, and the right goal, but also the more voices you have in the room, the harder it is to get to that.
I think that's really great feedback that it's a big group. So if there are ways to streamline, I think that's something Bob and folks can take back.
Yeah, what I say with, I, I believe that's an issue that technical assistance from the Crisis Roadmap folks, they're looking at how these councils function in other communities, can also be very helpful. Like this is a starting point and we can hone and refine it once we get that executive committee in place and we can continue to bring that, bring that back and bring that forward. This is just to try to get that, you know, the language and the structure in place so that we can really have a thoughtful conversation as partners about how to make this work best.
And I will add, we followed that exact logic with the CIT Council because that, that group was as, as large as over 40 members. And we have tried to pare that down to a little less than 25 of key players that really need to be at that table. And, but it's not set in stone, obviously. And if we find out that that's not working or it needs to be expanded, then we would be willing to do that. But that's great logic.
This is Commissioner Reed, I think what I appreciate about the sort of tiered structure might be helpful, especially in this beginning phase of the starting place to figure out what form this could and should take and how it might evolve, both in terms of size and structure, but so that executive committee having more frequent meetings, especially and starting as soon as possible to try and figure out what some of those initial guardrails are. And the less frequent opportunities for a fuller room to, to discuss some things. I think that that's a, I like the idea of that structure and I think it lends itself to having more opportunity for that executive committee to have a more focused conversation and then be able to bring more focused sort of questions and challenges to that larger group to try and get, request some feedback about, right? And figure out what it is that we're trying to change. And I think, you know, to the idea of like, well, consensus building is certainly the more, or has the reputation of being sort of the time-consuming and, and slow, arduous process. It doesn't always go that way. Sometimes it really just sets the tone for cooperation and like groundedness and knowing that we're all working towards the same goal. And so there's nothing to defend necessarily in the room and it's about just figuring out where the technical solutions are for things that we just didn't know were an issue until somebody articulated it or told us a story about how it played out in a, in an ineffective, inefficient way. So I, I think that that's a good starting place. I think that there's always, as with CJCC, and obviously I wasn't involved in the first few years, but have been involved in, in the last several years and that there's been a real evolution of where that group started to where we are now with the bylaws. And so I think I'm glad to know that we'll have that technical assistance from the Crisis Roadmap. Just, I think they've been a really solid resource to us in bringing all these services online. And now I hope that they'll be able to help us figure out how we really coalesce and, and strengthen those moving forward. And I also wanted to comment about the accountability question, and I just appreciate Chief Lockhart and Chief Patrick's examples of what that sort of looks like and the framing for it in this context, because I do think that the real power of a coalition like this is the ability for peers to hold each other accountable in ways that are not rigid or necessarily even rooted in policy or funding agreements, right? Those are separate decisions that happen at different times of year through our processes, through the city's processes, through the state's processes, all these, you know, other forms and avenues through which sort of rigidity and process is the name of the game and the tone of the conversation. tone of the conversation. And I feel like accountability in this sense is mostly about the relationship building and the trust that is necessary between all those partners, and recognizing that there's not siloed groups of public servants in our community, that we are all often working towards the same goal, just with different tools and different rules. I didn't mean to rhyme, but there you go. And so I just really appreciate hearing Chief Patrick and Chief Lockhart that you're thinking about accountability in that way, and that I, I'm hopeful that it also, you know, manifests in many of the ways that you're describing, Bob, and that it's a bit of a space for the vetting of and thinking thoroughly through ideas and opportunities before bringing them to a level of a fully public conversation and a request for something, whatever the something is, whether it's money or policy change, or whatever it is. So I'm hopeful about that, and I think that there's a real opportunity, having expanded the idea of, you know, we've thought about CIT Council as sort of strictly law enforcement for so long, and, and all these other emergency, community-based services where their own little silo of things, even though you're all showing up at the same scene sometimes, right? Or knowing each other because of those situations. So having more opportunities that you're all coming together and thinking through what's been going well and what's been not serving us as we try things out will be an important forum.
Could I ask, I want to invite Ryan and Sonya into this conversation also, because I do think it relates to the accountability piece, which is, there's one thing I've learned by watching this process over the last year and a half in particular, is there are expectations and accountability linked to expectations, and then there are the folks that are doing the work, and they've never had an opportunity to be involved in the process and say, hey, let's figure out how to calibrate these expectations so they're reasonable. Let's figure out, so I just would want to invite the two of you to kind of lean into that, because I think there's been some really thoughtful conversations, both in the CIT Council, familiar faces, and through the GPL process, that I think is a really helpful accountability lens that we haven't heard yet this afternoon.
Hi, it's Ryan from Burt Nash. Good afternoon. You know, I've really appreciated the creativity of that space. Clients only become familiar faces because the system is stuck. And that often means LEO, LMH, TRC, me, my teams. And so a lot of the solutions and creativity and things we've came up with in these processes has sort of manifested in an environment where people aren't afraid to throw wrong ideas or bad ideas out there. And a lot of times, sometimes I feel like we're stuck between the advocacy and the want to help somebody who's right in front of you with the statutes and laws in Kansas. And there's a big gap there. And trying to, A, not let people down, not let systems down, not let teammates down, while also explaining involuntary criteria, for example, in the state of Kansas is defined as the last 48 to 72 hours. It's not, we can't hospitalize people for fear of what may happen in the future. And there's just, I see a really macro-level psychoeducation, because, and having these conversations, which I enjoy the opportunity to do, sometimes that gives people tools in their tool belt, so that when they do have that person in front of them who says, "I want to kill myself," or witnesses someone be aggressive, they're now primed, and they now know, I have a limited window. I have 48 to 72 hours to get this in the hands of the mobile team or the TRC clinicians for us to be able to act. So I've really appreciated, and in some cases, when there aren't solutions, sometimes we work together and figure out where in the system can we give more time? And sometimes the gift of time is, is one of the best things that we can do, and I think of a few tough ones we've worked on recently, where the complexity of these issues is often beyond restarting psych meds. And one of the things we can do is, each of these teams and each of these organizations has strengths, and just trying to, within each of those, try to maximize the therapeutic benefit, if you will, of each has been a good thing. And in some cases, it's been the difference of giving someone that couple more days, you know, has hopefully, in some cases, led to someone being willing to sign a release of information that they wouldn't the day before, and now we can get somebody to a treatment setting that they need, but they don't believe that they need. And so I think that's the other reality, is so many of the conversations that I'm a part of are, someone else thinks you need this. And when we, when we talk with the client, they may have a different perspective of that. And ultimately, in a lot of these situations, their voice is the voice that we illuminate the most brightly. And then it's challenging, because we can't always share that with other community partners. And I, at times, I think that gets mistaken for a lack of concern, or a lack of want, or a lack of will, instead of a reflection of where the, where the client's at and their own recovery. But...
Sonya, you have thoughts on, I know MRT and ECC have been working together in ways that they haven't before, real recently, as you've watched that process, in terms of accountability, shared accountability and discovery.
Yeah, so Sonya Bayes, Emergency Communications, I would say, seeing the accountability part play out has been what's happened with the MRT-LPD-ECC partnership with law enforcement referrals for deployment of MRT. What we did is we scheduled weekly meetings where we would just discuss things that had come up, work through any processes, you know, identify ways to educate people that were using the system, and try ideas, fail at things, succeed at things, while we're all still working towards that same goal. And then in that same aspect, we get to provide each other support, you know? So if one of us is struggling in one area or another with how things are going, we have each other to lean on, or have you thought about this? Have you tried this? Sergeant Fogarty has been key in helping come up with some really good ideas to collaborate, and giving MRT ideas on a way to do training with their staff, help us all work better together while we're still creating and building the system. So nobody's being held to the fire, or, you know, getting in trouble for not doing something, but we're just having that accountability all the time, making sure that we're still working towards those same goals, and adjusting those goals if we need to do that.
And adjusting the metrics. I mean, getting to a point where we're not just gathering data, but we're gathering metrics that matter, and we're convening processes where thoughtful analysis is leading to, you know, interpretations and conclusions that allow us to make good decisions if we're going to make a change, or if we're going to implement new policy or new structures or procedures.
So in terms of, use the analogy of, you know, building the plane while flying it, and I know there's been so many great initiatives that have been put together to try and build the system, but as the system starts to coalesce and becomes more efficient, is this a group that would kind of recognize that there are pieces that maybe have, you know, lived their usefulness, and now they're being replaced by something that is more efficient? Because the system also needs to be intuitive for people to navigate, too, and can't be overly complex. Are there pieces that you're seeing already about that, or is this just the right forum to start identifying those?
I think we're already seeing that. And one example that I think we talked about a little bit in the budget process, and we're now talking about it, is the process of having peer-led or peer-first intervention to connect with people and get them to substance use treatment. The TRC is a new resource, and so that has disrupted the original assumptions or suppositions or, you know, focus of that project. There's also new opportunities that has to pull not just the county and one provider together, but the county and now three substance use providers who offer the same service so that we figure out how to get the person to the most appropriate and the, and the right setting at that, that moment in time. So that, that project is adjusting as a result. And these types of meetings and groups, workgroups, are, I think, the forum for those conversations, so they happen collectively, instead of one agency in the county and another agency in the county. Get in a room and really thoughtfully talk about how to best meet the needs of the people who need help.
I would also add, navigating the mental health system in Kansas is complex. And I appreciate the way that you've framed that, because one of the challenges that I have for my team and myself is to simplify things where we can. And I think some of the work we've done with the ECC, with, now the mobile team has sort of a multiple-path referral system where, and I got some data this week, that we're over 600 referrals for the year. So this becomes more pertinent as we get busier. But just being able to continue to, for that end user, it should be simple. For that client calling who's in distress, we really try to have the complexity be between us and our teams and get into the minutia, and that's really kind of one of the goals of not only this forum, but a lot of the work we do together. I think it should be noted that we, it has to be okay to fail some within this stuff. It's, there's only been an involuntary treatment track in Lawrence for a couple of years, meaning prior to the TRC, folks would get held at LMH and go out of town. And so I try to, I give myself and my team this affirmation often, but we're building some of this, some of these tracks, that there weren't, there weren't predecessors or footsteps to follow. And so I do think that it's just a good, we don't want the plane to crash, but there are some moments where there's turbulence, I'll say, for sure. So, but I just think that that, anytime you're building something new that's good and that lasts, there's going to be some bumps, and I think that that should be expected.
I just wanted to make one more comment and say, because that felt like a good segue in some of this commentary. One thing I really liked about the timeline, draft timeline, is the last thing that's listed right now, implementing ideal crisis system self-study and report card assessment. So to me, I mean, two things I'll say about that, you know, in terms of our conversation as commissioners about what the sort of public accessibility and or reporting out of information is with this group. I'm interested in us starting in a place where there's things to report, that, you know, reports or assessments, I really like the idea of self-study and assessment, because that ability to look inward and welcome feedback from your peers and other folks within the system is a really healthy way to, and just creates an environment where there's less resistance to change when you're self-identifying what could be or should be different. And then that those, like, whatever format that takes, report card assessments or report outs about what we've identified within the system and what we're working towards changing, that those are the stories I'm interested in us being to elevate, being able to elevate to the public and talk about how that progress looks going on, and being able to tell a sort of broad story about that, and celebrate the self-identified, like, wins and changes that are making things better along the way.
Sharon, do you have any final thoughts?
So I think you asked for some feedback here this evening, and I want to give you three pieces, just for something to think about. One is, we've had a great conversation, and I agree with everything that's said about accountability, but I do think there is an expectation publicly that accountability means you're accountable to something or someone. So we might want to think about something within the charter that sort of defines how you're thinking about that, is that capacity building, is that systemic accountability? I'll let you all figure out what that's like. I noticed on the slides, it said meeting with the city and the county, and I just encourage you, it's really great to see Udora and Baldwin, our other communities, involved in this, because this is not a Lawrence problem alone, so thinking about cities, plural municipalities. And, and then the last thing just to think about is, I know this has sort of focused the attention in our crisis responses, but I will admit, one of my losses was losing that Behavioral Health Coalition. And how do we move some of this same sort of collaborative approach to some of our other parts of the behavioral health system, so like prevention, for example? And is there, we're responding to the need here, but maybe if we looked at prevention first, and not first, but also, and thought about that, how can we take some of what we're learning here and apply it to other areas so we don't leave that out?
And I'd say that there, I think there's opportunities through the CHIP process, and a couple of things, if you look in the prevention plank, there are some things about putting some additional structures in place and expanding scope of some of those coalitions.
And can we get the slides updated to our packet, too? Commissioners, any other thoughts?
Just one last piece of feedback, which is that I, I think I heard you say, Bob, and I just want to validate that I heard it right, that part of the goal of this executive committee, sort of convening and meeting soon this year, is to talk about and define better what the community representatives might, might look like and how we articulate what that is. Is that accurate? Does that feel like a top goal? Because that feels important to me.
Can be.
It feels important to me to have some, have that flushed out a little bit more, you know, to Commissioner Kelly's point earlier, figuring out, how do we articulate what represented perspectives we want to ensure are in the room with all the system actors?
And I do like the idea of kind of dovetailing with the TRC Advisory Group, and, because I think that was one of the things, when we formed that, we maybe also had in our mind that they might be looking at a larger pieces of the system. I think we put some awesome people on that list, in that group. So I think that's, whatever that flushes out to be, I'm really interested to see what feels right there. Well, typically, our work sessions end at 5:00, but we were still having a good conversation, so I appreciate everybody's time and sticking with us. If there are no other further needs from us in terms of feedback or other comments from commissioners, looking here, we really appreciate your time, appreciate everybody being here, and the work that goes into everything that is happening, and wonderful happening things in our crisis system. So thank you for all being a part of it. With that, we are recessed until our 5:30 business meeting. Thank you.